Okay, we're gonna get our meeting on June 19th, 2018 started with rule call. Wendy.
Wendy.
Yeah, I can go. Buck Shapiro.
Amy.
Sarah.
Oh, do I still know? My boss is Charlie Zach.
April Lewis.
And Mike Dyson. Uh, do you have any citizen comments? Our notes, citizen comments? Is anybody here that would like to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda? Okay. We will move on then to 3.01, presentation by Rollingwood Park Trust, Inc., Western Hills Girls Softball Programming, Inc., and Western Hills Little League, Inc., in response to the request proposals for the operation and maintenance of the city of Rollingwood athletic facilities. Okay, thank you Mayor, thank you all. So, happy to be interrupted and answer any questions at any time, but for the sake of time, we're really just trying to, as a group, do everything we can to make Rollingwood fantastic, improve the park. We noticed some opportunities for change and improvement, and we got together as the leagues, and myself, and my associated parties, I guess, my organizations, my companies, because I can bring them to bear to help out, as well as using... Go ahead.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. My name is JR Craft. I live at 2803 Vance Lane. I also own property on 302 Inwood. But been here for four, three, four years, and I've got young children, a wife, we all live in the community, and we're at the fields frequently, and excited to do everything we can to participate in making better their participants in the leagues, and excited to be able to help them, you know, manifest their mission, work with the city to help with anything that the city would like in regards to the master plan, and just generally make improvements to the way the field and the athletic facilities are experienced, that including what I guess I would describe as the fieldhouse, the restrooms, the overall field and park areas, working with maintenance, and any other sort of capital improvements. If you reviewed the proposal, you'll see that we're putting forth a wonderful commitment to the city and to the park system, and looking to make capital improvements out of net new budget that's not been available in the past, and that's a minimum commitment. We're not really sure in our conversations with the city what might end up being required to make some of these improvements, as we have not had formal inspection of some of the sites that we look to improve, and we obviously need to make sure that we're in compliance with certain standards in the greater city and in Rollingwood. Obviously, we'll also be incurring expenses as we try and work with the city, and those will all be obviously incurred, I guess, just by me, so I'm willing to do that. I don't know, I don't know how to describe that in any other way, but we're trying to come together with a new organization that is obviously meant to be benevolent and engaged with listening to the council, the mayor, the citizenry, to kind of just do what we can to better the whole system, and so happy to hear whatever anybody would like to see. But we think that we can improve the concessions, which is largely what we're looking to do. We've agreed with the leagues to have them have everything that they've ever had with a little bit more support from me and my organizations, making sure that they're receiving, you know, all the budgets that they need, and hopefully what we can do is reduce the overall financial burden on the city by, you know, pursuing anything that the council deems reasonable to execute net new revenues and kind of defray some of the costs of the park, and we're just looking to, as collaboratively as possible, execute a good plan and see what we can get done with y'all. Does that sound about right? Good enough? Am I over time?
I, you're doing excellent when I talk.
Thank you.
Can I talk?
Yeah, of course.
My name's Chad Smith. I live at 2606 Rollingwood Drive. I grew up playing on these fields, and was president of Western Hills Little League for three years. I'm still on the board, I have been for the last 10, 12 years. I've also been a coach in the girls softball league for the last five or six years. I can tell you that we're fully in support of JR and everything that he's trying to do out here. We're all for anything that helps make this park a better place for everyone involved, so I just wanted to stand up and tell everybody that. The head of Western Hills Girls Softball is a good friend of mine who I coached with all year, he just happens to be out of town tonight, or else he'd be here, and y'all will know who he is, so anyway, just wanted to say that for everybody's benefit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, I think we've seen this in fairly broad strokes, I'm sure that council has had time to review this, and I have no doubt that they have a few questions. Do we have an action?
Later.
Later. Okay. Do we want to speak to questions and thoughts now?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't have any questions.
Fantastic. Thank you.
If somebody does, let's do it.
Okay.
Great.
I guess, I guess one question I have is, and you have something you said, it may impact other questions, like, I don't need to ask some questions right now, so where we are right now with the proposal, you all still need to go and actually do inspection to understand.
We're, we're willing to proceed without an inspection because we understand that, like, there's going to be challenges, we're not really all that concerned about it, we're just trying to let you know that, like, my minimum net commitment is above and beyond what is able to be considered currently, but in general, we're just trying to see what it is. I think that some of that is dependent on how you guys, what you guys want to have happen, or how you want me to proceed over what timeline. There's a bunch of work that can be done. How we triage that work is depending on the relationship with the city, and as I said, we're here to be good stewards of the park and prove it in the ways that everyone sees as reasonable, but like, we won't know what we're getting into until we're kind of like in the transition of maybe certain parts of the way concessions are run right now, or, you know, depending on what the city decides that they'd like to see us manifest. So, we're willing to do that at, at minimum, but it might cost more, you know, how could, you know, changes, sometimes it costs more, but once again, that's a cost on, on my give.
I have a question.
Please.
So, just looking through the proposal, I was, I just want to understand a little bit about how the structure will work, because I understand that there's going to be Western Hills Girls Softball, Western Hills Little League, and then JR Craft is you.
Yep.
And then you're forming a nonprofit, not-for-profit, what sort of, is it a 501(c)(4) that you're forming, or do you not, have you, have you all kind of worked through those details of how it would be set up?
Right now, we haven't worked out all the details on that, I mean, it's going to be formed as a nonprofit, probably 501(c)(3), and once we, y'all get the green light, so we're negotiating, we'll actually go to actually form the entity. As you can tell, we have a detailed term sheet, we met for hours, days, before just kind of work out the details on what this structure could be like, so we have the very specific framework of what it's going to look like. We're waiting to actually proceed to form an entity until y'all get the green light on moving forward with negotiations.
And would y'all be willing to have a representative from the city appointed by the mayor on the Board of Directors?
I think we definitely get interested in talking to y'all about that, we think maybe an observer, if it's in other means, would be more appropriate than another representative. We have members of both the softball and baseball already on there, so we feel like we have a broad group of peoples who's interested in doing the park, and of course, we'll have all reasonable reporting, and y'all asked what we're doing, but I mean, I think that's something we definitely have to talk about.
We would contract with the trust.
Yeah, I think that for the purposes of trying to make things simpler and kind of make a faster action in response to the city, just kind of like, one master lease, we're all, we're all together, we have a relationship, and we'll meet as necessary, but really it's like, just mostly nice things that are happening, just, you know, occasional budget conversations of like, where, you know, fees are shared, or what maintenance obligations there are, but in general, we're just trying to, like, deploy capital into the improvements and into the, to the structures and cleaning, and then some of the obligations transfer to me.
When you say you guys are going to have a lease, you mean internally, the three, you guys will all sign, have signed on to an operating agreement or something internally behind the trust, or?
Or, we're going to form the entity that's going to be the contracting party, which is the role of the trust, and then we are going to be the master of the lease, we're going to enter to settle leases with each baseball and softball, put them in the same situation they were before, with respect to their fields.
Okay.
So the city will just have one person to help with, meet with, or to negotiate with.
I had a question about the, there's, it looks like there's an exclusive concessions option, so could we carve out an exception for city-based events, like our, our police have several different events throughout the year?
Yeah, we definitely would love, like, the, this is not exactly an economic venture for, for me, it is more like we're trying to be net improvement on the organization. We'd love to work with the city on any events, we're just trying to like, make it so that, like, your best events, like, we have to like shut down, or whatever, because that will be opportunities for us to actually generate revenue for the city, which is what my understanding is, is that we're trying to, you know, defray some of those costs and be good, good parties to the, the activities that are going on, so we'd like to be working on these events with you, and obviously in the lease negotiation, we can talk about like how, any sort of revenue sharing goes from like what those events are, but once again, you know, basically nonprofits talking to government saying, hey, we're just trying to add value, add benefit, if we can hopefully get, you know, more monies coming to the city, or into the programming to develop the park, and you can see that in the proposal, that's what we're trying to execute, but I do understand the concern, we'd love to work through that with you.
Yeah.
And what is the new proposal that we're supposed to get into here soon?
Yeah, the, the, this benevolence fund foundation through, was a potluck, so in that case, there was, the only revenue that was being generated was through people making direct contributions to that foundation, and we held it in the parking lot there in front of the trailer, the police trailer, where it is right now. So, I think those are some events that, I know that there's, they're already on...
National night out.
A national night out is another one, yeah, where normally all of the, a lot of different restaurants will donate the food, it's there that night, so I was thinking more of the, the events that we're throwing where the, there wouldn't really be a revenue opportunity for concessions unless we really changed the structure of how we run those events, if that makes sense.
Wait, as our relationship is with the leagues, like, we're willing to make improvements and not like disrupt anyone's economics that are in place, we're looking to lift the economics and the deferral of the cost structures that are currently intact, and so we would love to, as an organization, participate, participate in helping you get more benefit from the events that you're, you're doing, and because I have professional staff that's deployed on a variety of other things, we can use that organization structure to, you know, help generate better outcomes, and we don't want to be taking any budget from any organization that's looking for these economics to come out, it's not, that's not our intent, so we'd love to help, but like, we understand that if the city has a certain point of view on certain events.
I mean, I think if you have someone who can help lift things, so my husband doesn't have to lift his many heavy things.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you, but to your point, I think that's exactly, that's exactly the, kind of the value add we're talking about here, we have a lot of fantastic people in this community that volunteer at least tens of thousands, if not more, of their, their hours and their services, goods and services, and so part of that is, is to talk about, you know, kind of these public-private partnerships with organizations where, you know, I suspect this is not going to be anywhere close to one year more profitable ventures from a, you know, dollars and cents perspective, but from a community investment perspective, there are a number of our citizens that are able to step up, you know, in this type of way, and maybe alleviate some of the pressure that is on, say, the usual suspects, right, the folks that are, I mean, constantly stepping up to really bring a greater level of involvement from our community in, in bearing the...
It would be our intent to, in concert with the city, talk about what the needs are of the execution of the events that are, are in the park, and be like, whoa, so right now, you don't actually have really a, the functional concession, it's not real, and it can't be, but it can, you know, it's staffed by children and like volunteers, and that's super great, but like, you can't do certain things there, it only takes cash, like, there's a bunch of things that like we want to be able to make as a, as a better service to the community, and it would be the same with the events, looking to like lift the revenues of, of any of the organizations, lift the donations, make sure that you're getting access, those organizations are getting access to the way we would promote events across my other companies, you know, so, you know, software can be expensive, so can people, you know, you get fractional access to people that I'm spending a lot of money on and saying, you know, come on over here and we're going to go do these things and that kind of stuff, is, is more along the lines of what we'd be like, like to do, and we can make them lift that, you know, cooler for you, I'll do it myself. Let the record reflect, I'll be lifting a cooler.
I think the idea of the exclusive is just for the leagues to turn over concessions to him, because he's going to be pumping a lot of money into this fieldhouse, that's his own money, and, and, and we're very grateful for that, so we're happy to give him an exclusive over that, it's something that the leagues consider a benefit to the league, we've always wanted it, we've never had the manpower, the finances to really have somebody take that on, like JR's willing to do, so I think his point that he's, you know, wants to add value to the park is well received by us.
That makes sense, yeah, and, yeah, and I think...
We're not trying to take away from potluck dinners or anything like that, we're trying to create a place that people want to go to, and, you know, if, for the first couple of years, you know, we have to shut that down while y'all do a potluck dinner, that's, that's fine, but the idea is to have another amenity out here at the park where people can come have coffee or whatever, that's a bonus to what we have now.
I would love to be able to walk somewhere and have coffee.
Me too, me too.
And also have a potluck in the park, because I think, at the end of the day, there's certain parts of our park that function as a community space, and so making sure that we still have some flexibility for the women's club and the other...
Absolutely, we, we, we want to be facilitating more net new space that is clean and usable, you know, depending on how our, our communication with the city goes, we might be doing new seating groupings so that there's more place, places to commune, and, you know, enjoy the space that we're hoping to create, and, you know, hopefully just net better. I do, I do happen to own a cafe supply company, which means that I can put really nice stuff in there, which is my hope, because I really like nice coffee, I hope y'all do too, because that's what we're going to put in there. If you have any preferences, let me know, we can even have decaf if you really want.
So, I really love the idea of anything that is a community gathering place in our park, that offers opportunities for our residents to get out and enjoy the park and have coffee and tacos.
Good suggestion.
That happens, and, so I really, I, I like the idea of this, I have also served on the park commission for several years before, being on the city council, so there are some things that I, I just need to work out and understand the parameters around how this is set up, and our park commission in the past has been in charge of overseeing the contracts for Little League, and looking at who's using the park, how the fields are being used, and so one of the things that I have continued to say as the lease is coming up for renewal, is that I would like to see opportunities for more ages of kids to have, in Rollingwood, to be able to ride their bikes and use the park and go to practices, and one of the things that I've seen is if you're eight and under and you play baseball, then there's practices and games, and if you're 12 and under for girls, maybe a little older, then you can use the field for softball, I know it's not practical to, to have all of our games scheduled differently than how they're scheduled, but I would just love, in our talks, that we look at having practices for different age groups, in the offseason, even having the younger kids come in and play soccer, I just want more kids in our community to be able to use our park.
That's great, I think what the, what we're trying to secure and what we wanted to make sure that you understood as an, you know, as a, as a government, is that our, our intent is to not disrupt the current leaseholders and to make the, the park more available to more parties, and I think that that would, you know, as long as we're not disrupting existing commitments to the leagues, I think it would be great, I think that if you, if you start having a, a more consistent concession offering of coffee and other things, potentially tacos, you know, it, it, you really, and I want to hear all the ideas, I mean, you know, you can have the snow cones seasonally, you can do whatever it is that like is, is, is requested, we really want to listen, and we really want to, it's not a very big community, you know, and it doesn't park very well either, you know, so it's not like we're, you know, expecting to be like some sort of, you know, outside surge of, of traffic or something, we're just hoping to serve the, the residents that are here, which includes my family and many families that I care about, and so we want to make sure that we're, we're serving as many people as we can, especially our young, our young citizens, our young non-voting citizens.
I think that, that's, that's just something I want to make sure that we, we look at when we're negotiating the, the contract, is that, that the city and the park commission have some oversight in how things are scheduled, and like you said, we don't have a lot of parking, and so I think a lot of the issues that we have with our parking can be dealt with, with scheduling, with having bigger intervals between, sorry, between when games start and end, and those are sort of things that you have to work out with the ball clubs, and so the structure where there's an umbrella and then you're leasing out to them, I'm just worried that it could take away some of the control that the park commission could have over that sort of thing, and I don't think it's a, you know, it's something that we want to talk about.
Yeah, I think, I think that what, what we need to, what, our, our intent is to use a variety of tools in order to communicate with the citizens about net park opportunities, meaning, hey, listen, now we got new stuff, hey, do you want some snow cones, you know, like, or whatever it is that like, you know, tacos, that kind of stuff, whatever those net new ideas are, and we still need to talk with y'all about what you think is a good idea, we're saying, hey, what if, what if we spend some money making things a little bit better, what are the things that are, you know, a good idea, maybe you guys don't like Costa Rican coffee, you know, I do, you know, I want to make sure we're responding to things even at that level, I think what would be a great idea is for, for me and the leagues, is for us to say, this is what the leagues need, this is their, this is their time box, and here's kind of like some of this wiggle room, right, and then you got, you know, a free time in the park, you know, and kind of opening it up and making sure that people know that it's an available time in the schedule, and like letting that be known to, you know, some of our younger parents that like, hey, look, it's, it's available. We obviously, in, because it's a parking challenge in there, and I think a dangerous parking challenge at that, like, we do need to address some of those issues as a community, and, you know, we'd be willing to be supportive of some exploration in, in that regard, my kids are there all the time, I, I do get concerned about, you know, the kids coming in to ride their bikes when you've got heavy traffic inflow and outflow, so I think good communication can really respond to what your need is, and making sure that, you know, parents know when you've got a open park opportunity, but...
So you have some kind of scheduler that would juggle all the schedules?
Our, our intent is to be able to work on that and be able to present tools so that people can better understand when, when park events are going to happen, or when park utilization can happen, the technology part for me is very easy, making sure I listen to everybody's needs is, you know, the part where I make sure my lawyer's here, but he's also my friend, so, you know, he's my neighbor too, but, you know, he's helping us get this out.
You know, I think we take your point, I, I mean, I don't think we've gotten that far in the, in the weeds on exactly how we're going to deal with it, but our goal is to work with them and make sure we're scheduling everything in a effective, efficient way, and one reason we put them up on the board, reference each club, is so we wouldn't be interfering with the communication between the park commission and the leagues as far as items like that, and our goal is to make it from the city's perspective and the league's perspective that nothing's really changed, I mean, it's the same relationship except for increasing revenue sources to make it net neutral in the city's perspective, and as well as generating more revenues in the ribbon park, I mean, from the parks commission, or the park commission's perspective, the city's perspective, I mean, they can talk to the league if they want to, and we can, that direct communication needs to occur, it can, but we hope we've facilitated enough of that.
I appreciate this, I think, you know, we're, this is a proposal, and we'll have some time to work through it and get some parameters around if the council moves forward with this, to get some parameters around how we want it set up, so that, I just wanted to let you know that those are the things I'm concerned about, is just having access for more kids in our community to use the park, and there are some drainage issues up there I'd love to see on the capital improvement projects as well, and, you know, most fields have drains around the fields, things like that that could really help alleviate some of the drainage flow that comes down here, of course, I don't want to get in the weeds with all this, it's more of a big picture talk, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that the park commission deals with in regards to the lease, that we just want to make sure that the city still maintains some sort of, I don't want to say control, but control over, that we can make sure that, that, you know, the trash dumpster, dumpsters are in a place that aren't going to impact the park negatively, and that events still come through the city council, drainage projects are done, possibly, you know, implementing improvements for parking that are outlined in the master plan in the future, and, and sort of obligating yourself through the revenue share to put money toward those improvements as, as this progresses, I think that there's a lot of room to, to find some parameters that, that we're...
At least from the league's perspective, it's not our intent to cede control from the parks commission in any way, we're just trying to better the park, and keep, we want to keep the lines of communication at least as open as they have been, if not more, so open and more organized, as far as when we're using the parks, so that we can better use it for other events as well, including, you know, city events, so.
Sorry, we do have an action.
Are you taking action?
Yeah.
And the rest of the staff, questions?
Yes, I was just gonna, I was just gonna request that we kind of, we, we keep it, keep it tight, because we have a couple other presentations, we do have discussion later.
Do you have an idea what type of term on the lease you would need, if this was a return investment?
I don't think this is going to, I don't think this is going to make any money.
For what?
For me, like, I think that it can make money for the city, but I don't want to, you know, what's that?
A million years.
Well, so it's, 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 it's not, it's not about that, but if...
Yeah, a hundred years.
It'll take a hundred years.
Round and round.
But I mean, so that's just, so to me, you know, we made a proposal based off of what, what feels like an amount of time that seems like if we're going to be kind of like, I'd prefer not to be so tight about like what the capital improvements are, and just knowing that we're going to kind of continue to try and make net benefit and get money to the city in as many ways as we can, so that we can continue to make these improvements, offset any sort of budgetary concerns for the park, but once again, it's a 501(c)(3), like, it, it'd be nice to be able to generate new budget, but the idea is to deploy any capital yield back into the programming, so hopefully, you know, like, we just see that it looks better, the tacos taste better, and the coffee's nice, and the, all the stuff, and everyone in the room can enjoy what's, what's, what's there on a daily basis, that's the real goal, hopefully, we're able to get to a cost-neutral situation as quickly as possible, but, you know, I think that depends on how much leeway we have from a lease standpoint to just pursue the economic goals that we can decide on, but as, as I said before, I, I don't think this is an ROI-based thing to me, I think we can get to net neutral, but like, we should be continuing to invest in capital improvements, but as soon as I make the capital improvements, they become the government's, so there's no asset class that's being generated in any way, so it's just kind of, I don't, I don't know, it's a weird deal, I understand, I just thought it'd be cool, we made the park a little better, we could eat, I'll drink coffee.
But, yeah, but we did talk about term.
They all live here in the neighborhood, and we, we always have to drive out of the neighborhood to get coffee, I can't meet anybody in the neighborhood. I could come here.
Well, we did talk about term, now, I mean, I think to the extent he's going to invest in... I mean, I think to the extent he's going to invest in the large sums of money, if he's thinking about that, so we thought a 15-year term was what would be reasonable for that. So that was kind of our proposal.
Can you describe what you have in mind for the sponsorships?
So is there a particular note or just kind of like in general from a sponsorship's perspective? So obviously, sponsorships in good taste and in the context of city benefit and the benefit of the leagues. My organizations have a promise, and I would just say getting things done. If the city and the leagues are amenable to tasteful sponsorships, we can facilitate that and get it done. And hopefully, that can offset any sort of new programming that, you know, the city is willing to allow. But from a sponsorship standpoint, there's obviously precedent across the Austin region of like sponsorships at different fields and different program like that. That isn't the only way that we might be able to generate sponsorships. But once again, what this document enumerates is the idea of sponsorships, obviously. And we need to talk with you all about what makes sense, what kind of revenue stream you guys would like us to position the city for. And obviously, we're looking to make sure that any, we've put in here that anything that's generated off the fields, that we have a cost coverage that happens from what it took for us to get that, and it goes to y'all. And I think there's a little bit of a capital reserve maybe?
I guess our direction is the same, capital reserve.
And then obviously, we think that you guys are on top of that incentive format, right? Which we haven't negotiated the lease, we just have this proposal. So it's, we don't want to, listen, I am here because I wanted things to be better and to look better and generally like to look great. I definitely do not want the field in any way to look anything but absolutely tiled and beautiful. And so the sponsorships must be elegant, they must be tasteful. Like, we're not putting any bad brands or anybody with bad reputations into our sponsorship queue. We really want this field to be an icon of the city and of the way a field could look. And so, you know, we want to do that in a tasteful way. Obviously, we did it with the influence of council and, you know, for the net benefit of the organizations involved. But I'd love to hear if there's a concern after that statement, but.
In my experience, sponsorships at all fields consist of advertising signs on the fences. And I'm thinking that would not go over at all well with the neighbors. So that's why I was wondering what.
Neon signs, neon signs? So I think, yeah, I think that in the other communities in Austin, there's family sponsorships. There are, so I used to own a company called BuildASign.com, and I've probably made more signs than most people in the United States. But the, I know how to make tasteful graphics, and I know how to present that in a way that I think the city would see as a net benefit, obviously economically and visually. The thing is, is that when we start to make capital improvements to look, you know, if you look at Major League Baseball and the beautiful field experience that you have, there are sponsorships all around, or otherwise, the fields don't look like that. You know, if we want the fields to look a certain way and a certain caliber of execution, we should consider what sponsorships can be done in a way that makes us really have an amazing field. And that's a way for us to generate economics, but it's also a way to actually improve the looking feel of the field. I don't want to do it in a way that damages our neighbors. But I would say, this is a general thing. If you own a house on the park right now, don't sell it. It's going to be so great. Like, you're going to love what you got, you're going to walk the coffee, you might get tacos, you know? There's some real opportunities there, but I think that the improvements to the field are going to be a visual delight at the end of the day. And I don't want to do anything that makes it look in any way trashy or that we're, you know, we're selling out in some format. But that's not my intent. And personally, I'd rather just cover all the budget myself than make it look anything less than fantastic. You know, so the sponsorships is just a way for us to get the community involved and to make it, you know, look like a real field, you know? And we want to do that in collaboration with your input, so.
And Sarah, I mean, I think the goal right now is that we're trying to look at various ways we could increase revenues to the fields in the park, and sponsorships are probably one of those. During the negotiation on lease, I'm sure it's not only talking about willing to collaborate with the city, come up with a plan that's acceptable to y'all and everyone else. And I think we can't tell you exactly right now what they would be, but whatever they would end up being would be something the city would have approved or permitted. So I think, I think that's kind of our position right now. We want to work towards doing something like whether scoreboards with some stuff on it sponsored by someone or something like that, that it adds to the value of the park and the experience. But it's something that at no time will be done without city council's approval and permission. So I think that that should get you to feel comfortable with that component right now is that y'all will be involved in the process, and of course, that's right.
And do you think that, just, I don't want to take too much time on it, but do you think is that like a visual cue, like that you don't want someone having advertisement out the window type of thing, is that? I think that, I can understand that. I think that there's ways for us to use landscaping tools in order to make sure that we're not visually impairing, you know, somebody's like existing circumstance. And I'm totally willing to like try and mitigate any sort of detriment to anybody's sidelines. I think as I look at it right now with the way the positioning of things, I think you have maybe several houses that could be impacted. But as I said, my goal is for it to be absolutely marvelous and in no way trashy or a problem for our citizens. So I really want to work through that with you because it really, it really could be a place where in addition to money and efforts and organizational push that I can bring to it, we might be able to get some real impact from, you know, having those companies want to be there and, or their families wanting to donate, which I think would be a really positive.
You also have here a section on other activities on site and talking about having an unlimited right to use other areas of the site for other events. And so it sounds like things other than softball, baseball, and just wondering what you had in mind?
Yeah, so, you know, we still obviously haven't negotiated anything with the city. We've only got our buddies here, the league, trying to follow the proposal. But what we think is an opportunity is, I don't know, net new events. And I don't know what those, what the city would be allowable of, but there's a lot of revenue generating activities that we could pursue. And so we're trying to hold space for that and have a dialogue with council about what's permissible, what makes sense, what's inside different frameworks. Is it, I don't know, you know, you want a pumpkin patch? I don't know. You want a pumpkin patch? We can bring in a bunch of pumpkins, is that nice? Sure, maybe? Do you want to do, you know, what are the seasonal things that could make sense for us to try and address and have good activities around? You know, is it anything for our young, our young little climbers? Do we want to do inflatable things or any of that kind of stuff, like they really can climb around on it? You know, I don't know. We're very open to any of the ideas that anyone would have. We just want to see that, I look at this as an opportunity for me to help the city raise some money in a way that I have skills. And so if you guys say, hey, listen, here's the parameters, I can win in whatever the parameters are. You open the parameters up a little bit more, I get you more money. I get a little bit more on the parameters, we get more money back to the city, we defray the cost, make more improvements a little bit faster. The more restrictive it is, you know, like, I can still work within that. We can still get net positive gain, and I think that that's worth doing regardless. And I know that you guys are trying to, you know, put a framework on it so that we don't do damage to, you know, the wonderful community we have today. So I'm excited to, you know, stay within any guidelines that you guys see fit. But I really just, you know, the more leeway we have to try and ideate and get, you know, maybe we try an event, it doesn't work, you know, maybe no one wants to buy a pumpkin. I don't know. But I mean, those are things that we're willing to, you know, experiment with and could be, you know, kind of fun and bring more people into the heart of the city.
And I think one thing in particular we've kind of spoken about was like night out movies during the summer, where all the families can come to the park, you have a screen facing the way from those houses back towards the park, we'll be playing, get some picnics, maybe stop by the cafe. I mean, so when we put that in, and we put it abroad in order to permit activities like that, maybe to brainstorm out what activities they would like to occur to bring them together. So movie at the park would be an example of why we included that vision in there. We wanted to make sure that since the fields have access and control of the fields partially, that we have the right to step in there and do that.
And remember, the leagues aren't looking to benefit financially from any of these events. It's just the idea of bringing community out to the park and getting better utilization out of it and then plowing anything minor amounts that we do make back into the park to make it a better place. To make it a better place that people can use more often.
Okay, guys, thank you very much. Three time. We'll be, excuse me, we'll be calling up an agenda item later for the council to consider taking action on. At that point, we'll also have an opportunity for any additional comments from what else in the public.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll call up 3.02, presentation by, I might have to just refer to you as ATS.
It's fine.
Perfect, thank you guys. Regarding the proposal to provide claim review, inspections, and professional, excuse me, consultation services and to fulfill the position as building official for the city.
Mayor and council, my name is Rich Emerson. I'm the building official with Arch Technical Services that are known as ATS. And I'd like to introduce Linda Brown, our business development director.
We have a history on our company.
Thank you, mayor, council members, and others for having us and giving us this opportunity to talk to you tonight. ATS has been operating in central Texas here at home for the last 25 years. We incorporated in 1994, recently purchased by two young individuals. And so now we are Arch Technical Services LLC. But we still do our business as ATS, engineers, inspectors, and surveyors. We currently service over 25 municipalities and jurisdictions in central Texas. A wide variety in sizes and organizational types, from mud districts to small towns to larger towns. Buta is one of our clients. And we have seen them grow from a small town on I-35 to who they are today, which is bustling economy and community that continues to grow. We continue to help them. They have brought a lot of their services in-house, but they call us up and we still help them with plan review and inspection services. So we are very adaptable. We provide what you need, when you need it, how much you need. Because our main goal is to help the cities and the jurisdictions that we service thrive and grow. And so we know that we need to be flexible to be able to do that.
You want to tell a quickie?
I know. What you guys need us to do, we can do it pretty much all in the code arena. And that encompasses your residential all the way to your commercial, industrial. If you happen to build a 15-story hotel, we're the people that you're going to need. If you want a five-story underground parking garage, if you want a 15,000-square-foot single-family dwelling, you name it, we can do it. We're fully staffed. All of our inspectors are certified through ICC. Most of our inspectors are state licensed plumbing inspectors. We do medical gas, accessibility, we do energy code. And if you have any other technical issues that might come up, we have a fully staffed structural and MEP engineering division. We're also complemented with a survey department and just many fine, talented people. We call this our home. As a matter of fact, we do business on a daily basis with your neighbor, Westlake Hills. We're very adept and comfortable at doing our role. You'll notice our vehicles in the neighborhoods, they're professionally badged. All of our inspectors wear clothing that identifies them as ATS employees. We act as an agent of the city when we're doing our duties. And that means that our employees always act as a professional. They're courteous, they're kind. As a matter of fact, I like to say that we don't complicate solve problems. We solve complicated problems. And a lot of our people keep coming back to us for those practical solutions that may not be so obvious. We've helped many municipalities, as Linda pointed out. I've been with the company since 2001. I fulfill the role as a building official, so that means I get to robe around with all our clients. This morning, I spent about three hours with the city of Taylor in a DRC and helped them see some possible solutions to issues in a wide variety of different scenarios. We'll do the same for you. I don't know if you were given a proposal, I think Ms. Lewis was given this. And did you have any questions? Has everybody been able to read through this? Proposal for services?
Be happy to open it up to the dice again for Q and A if council has thoughts or questions.
I had one. I noticed on the list of services, I'm trying to see where it was, that you don't, plan review does not include zoning. So I'm just wondering how it works. There's probably parts of what may be considered building code that have been in our zoning code. Are you, when you say zoning, is that zoning code? Like where we have things in our zoning code, or is that a type of evaluation?
Well, there is a delineation between zoning and building code. Your adopted building code may be amended.
Theoretically, there is.
But the zoning, the zoning you have is particular to your city and not anybody else. Your building code, if it's unamended, it's going to be the same code that anybody else has adopted that's unamended. So if you have a particular zoning that blends with your building code and it's notated in your adopted code, your amended code, we're going to pick up on that and we're going to enforce your code. That doesn't necessarily mean if it's not in there, we're going to enforce it because we won't know about it. We, I hate to say this, but on purpose, we avoid working with city zoning because it's such a very particular part of a city's identity. And our inspectors go in and out of many cities all the time. And we don't want issues creeping up where, for instance, when I do a review, I'm misapplying something and it goes through the review and it either gets missed or it's applied, and then it just holds up the process. And the same thing happens in the field because, I'll just give you a, for instance, Westlake Hills has an ordinance in their zoning where you can't have reflective glass. It's a good reason for it, but it's nowhere to be found in their adopted building code. So therefore, that's not a particular issue either myself and plan review is going to identify. I know about it, but I'm not obligated to report it in my report. Now, I may pick up a phone, I may send an email and say, listen, I just need to point this out if nobody else has pointed it out already. You probably have an issue with the amount of glass that you have facing west. And it's up to them to seek the solution on that side. But if it has to do with a building code issue and I identify some glazing that exceeds a certain amount of square feet and it's in a hazardous area and it's not identified as being a safety glass, I'm going to identify that and I'll have to make those corrections. So there is a split there, and that's just something that ATS, we don't do the zoning side of it. We can help, we can participate. And as I said earlier, we're always trying to seek solutions for a good resolution. If that happens to be training and coaching staff and blending our resources, we can certainly do that. We've done that in the past, and we do it today.
So the other cities that you work for, how do they typically handle enforcement? Because I would say that sounds to me like you're not planning to enforce any of our ordinance.
Well, that's an excellent question, and they do it internally through staff. They have planning departments with planners that do nothing but zoning. And they're inspect- And their inspectors go out in the field and that's what they do. They'll, they'll make sure that the masonry count. I mean, obviously it goes through plan review on a zoning side. And if it's a masonry issue where they have to have X percent of masonry, it'll be caught in the plan review. If it goes beyond that and the permit's issued, the next step is the inspection to verify.
I can tell you this, Horseshoe Bay is an example of a city that utilizes a review board, an architectural review board without part of the zoning. Cottonwood Shores is another community and they utilize volunteers from their community that have a level of expertise that can look at plans. They know what the city requires with regards to the, to architecture. And, and so they volunteer that time to do those reviews and to, and to review that, that work.
Is our, is our criteria angle part of zoning or part of our building code? It's in the building code?
It's, okay.
I, I don't think that that falls under the category. It sounds to me like what they're talking about is like international building code stuff, is that angle? And so our personal criteria angle is not down by something that they would be having.
And they were not asked to do that either, that would still look with L and B.
Right, but the rest of the building ordinance requirements, we don't have staff to handle that.
And when we, when we talk about their contract later, I was going to talk about some of the options that I researched and, you know, how we were thinking about possibly handling that.
That's helpful with your, how other communities have the volunteers. Because I know a resident who's wondered whether she could provide her service on a volunteer basis. She's an architect and so that makes sense. I think that the challenges that are, zoning code right now includes a lot more than potentially the masonry requirements. So I think that would be some things we would have to look at, but I'm interested.
Case of redevelopment would be overwhelming for a volunteer board at this point.
I, I mean, I don't know how long it takes to review, so I can't speak to that. I'm sure you can hear it working.
Council, additional questions for the presenters?
I know, we spoke a little bit before the meeting and that one thing that you've helped other municipalities do is get set up with MyPermitNow, which I think will help our city streamline our processes, be able to see where we are a little bit easier. Can you speak to just kind of your experience that you've had?
Sure. MyPermitNow is an excellent tool for any municipality of your size. It's got a lot of arrows in its quiver. We use it all the time, day in and day out. As a matter of fact, there's a project that I was working on before we came. And before the sun goes down, I've got to get back in there and, and resolve an issue. Bottom line is it's an excellent record-keeping device. You can, you can close down your access for only certain people to get into certain parts if you want. It's password protected, it's got two sides. There's a portal side for the applicants and then there's the other side for your staff and third-party companies. We can upload documents, we can use it to send documents and emails. We can do revision reviews, we schedule your inspections through it. If you are anywhere in the planet Earth and you've got an internet access, you can retrieve anything for your project. So it's a very robust, very versatile tool. And we've been able to mesh with it, I guess, since its inception in central Texas. I mean, we're going on about eight years now, I guess. But a lot of cities have, have kind of jumped on board just because it's, it's a very robust tool to use, like I said earlier.
It sounds like maybe within that system you have experience using that, that we can track those issues that may need to be looked at by the zoning person.
Absolutely.
And then have a process for that through the system that maybe you wouldn't have reviewed for that, but we know that these things need to be looked at.
It's got a note feature that you can tick off and you kind of leave a picture in time, so to speak. So you can dialogue or leave, you know, notes. But other departments can utilize it, your fire, even your police, your code enforcement, planning, zoning, water, wastewater, any department really. City managers, mayors can get in there and check it out.
Looking forward to it.
The great, the great thing that I have found also is that it provides windows where you can get a snapshot and it compartmentalizes the different areas that affect either, you know, remodel or new construction. And so both the applicant as well as the city can know in a moment's notice where we are, how close are we to a certificate of occupancy issue. And so you're not fumbling through all the papers and sorting through a massive file on one address. You can go to that particular window and go, oh, plan review's done, fire review's done, zoning's done. But we still have outstanding seven priority inspections that need to be done. And so it's just a really quick and easy way to move through the development process.
And can I add, there's almost like an all-in feature because you could set it up to where an applicant can go through several layers. But then there's a bar they have to, they hit before they can proceed. Final inspection's a big one, certificate of occupancy's a big one. And that gives you a, a time to regroup, make sure that they pass all their inspections, pay any reinspection fees or, or any other due fees, tab fees, impact fees, something of that nature. Just so you don't keep it moving into a CO situation. And then they've got things that are outstanding that have been cleared. So there is that feature that is an extra tool for housekeeping.
And we helped Buda set up their, kind of their priority list of inspections. When you get into commercial versus residential, those inspections don't necessarily follow the same priorities. There are partials, what we call partials, inspections in commercial and not so much in residential. And so setting up those priorities of those gateways says, you know, you can do this, but you can't do, you can't get this inspected until you pass this. And MyPermitNow is a, is a very good tool for locking that down.
I look forward to meeting with you and helping get that set up. So I think that would be really helpful.
We'd be glad to help.
Thank you.
Anything else, council? Thank you very much.
We certainly appreciate your time, mayor, council.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, we'll be taking up a potential agenda item later this evening. And feel free to sit around if you'd like, but certainly not necessary.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. 3.03, a presentation by Janet Pittman, CPA with ABIP in response to the request for proposals for the city.
Should I just get started? I can start without. I think you all got it.
I actually didn't think you'd say that. I think your comments about not wanting to be the first.
I know, I know, I'm the guinea pig here and it's just, anyway. My name is Janet Pittman. I am a partner with ABIP. We are a CPA firm in San Antonio. We also, our headquarters are actually in Houston. So we have, we're a regional office, office in Houston, which is our management office. And then we have our location in San Antonio. A little background information, in 2012, I was with a firm in San Antonio. We merged with the firm in Houston, with ABIP in Houston. Also during that same time, ABIP merged with a firm in New Braunfels. And their partner was Pat Wagner. And she actually had the contract with the city. So anyway, we, we all merged together and then Pat retired, I think around in 2016. So I started working with his city. So that's how we've all come together over the years. We are a member of the AICPA peer review program and also with the Government Audit Quality Center, which is subdivision of the AICPA. The peer review program requires us to have our own audit every three years. We have a CPA firm come in and look at our work papers, look how we're doing our audits to make sure we're in accordance with the auditing standards. You did get a copy of that, that letter in your, in the proposal that you received. It, it was a pass. We get pass or fail, so it was a pass. The Government Audit Quality Center is, is really a good, it's a subdivision of the AICPA that provides us with a lot of technical assistance and also a lot of continuing professional education that's very relevant to what we do. Excuse me, our firm also provides other services besides audits. We do tax returns and bookkeeping services, consulting services for a various variety of industries. Our San Antonio office, the audit practice, is concentrated on local governments. We do have overall about 80 employees, about 35 in San Antonio, 45 in Houston. Our audit team is a team of 14 individuals, myself and Michael Del Toro. I think he was here for your presentation in March. And then we have three audit managers, three audit seniors. And then we've got six team members that have been with us from, some just started a couple of weeks ago, up to four years. And Mike and I both, if you add our experience together, we have a combined experience of 45 years. This next page is your team, your management team, which would be myself and Mike. And then our manager who's Jeremy Barbato and he's been with us out of college. He's been with us for eight years now. Mike and I are both members of the, I'm going to use a lot of acronyms, GFOA. GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association. And we are special review committee members. We review comprehensive annual financial reports from all over the United States during the year. And you submit that once a year for a certificate in excellence in financial reporting. The city does not currently do that submission, but we are versed in that and would be happy to help you if you choose to submit that. All right, let me get that. Oh geez, there we go. I think we ended up actually on the page, on the next page. This is a listing of our current cities. We actually, there's three up there that we are not currently doing, Leon Valley, Shirts and Cimelo. All the other cities are current clients of ours. And we do, you can see from the listing, a range of sizes. So City of Wood Creek is our smallest city. And the city of St. Marcus is our largest, largest city. So we're well-trained in various sizes of different cities. And I don't know if you see the little star, those are the cities that have submitted to the GFOA their comprehensive annual financial report. And they have all received their certificate of excellence in financial reporting.
Can, can I regard, sorry, do you mind my asking a question?
Oh, absolutely.
Would you mind elaborating on, just very briefly, on the significance of that certification?
Well, it does say that you are, have excellent financial reporting. It, it provides a lot of additional information that your report doesn't have right now. The biggest piece is back in the back, there's a statistical section that has 10 years of information. And people always go to that, they want to know the 10-year history on your fund balance, so there's just.
So would you, sorry, would you mind elaborating on why we might find that information?
Well, if you're going out for bonds, it's excellent. The bond rating agencies really look to that information because there's a vast amount of information there. I think that would be the key. And it's just a matter of pride too for the city is to, especially get it the first time because it's a lot of work to put it together.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Again, those are our cities that we currently do. We also do other local governments. That is our concentration and it's not going to go up. So anyway, there is a listing of our other governments. We do, again, school districts. We do northeast, large school, school district in San Antonio. But we also do Southside, which is a small school district. And we do three counties and also the appraisal district. Again, you can see the ones with the stars, it's usually your larger organizations. We are required, when you do government audits, you are required to have 80 hours of CPE, continuing professional education, every two years. 24 hours of that, 80 hours, needs to be specific to government audits. That is a requirement to do local government auditing. Again, we are a member of the Quality Control Center and they, they provide us with an excellent source of CPE. And then we're also very involved in our monthly GFOAT meetings, Government Finance Officers Association of Texas. And Texas is divided into 26 regions. And we facilitate those monthly meetings for Region 7. So just in summary, we focus, that's all we do. We do government audits. Both Mike and I and our staff, we focus on, on that, on that sector of auditing. We are involved in all aspects of the engagement. We're here working, we're not sitting in the office and having our staff do the audit and then bring it back to us. We're, we're out here. And that is because we can identify any potential issues. It provides good communication for us between you and your staff and then also with our team members. We do like to, because all cities generally have the same year end, we do block a specific time period, because everyone wants their audit at the same time. We do block some time specifically for this city so that we're here. And, and that's really less disruptive for your staff also. They've got lots of other things to do besides getting them ready for the audit. And again, we do have a commitment to continuous training of our staff. And also our clients, most of them have been with us for many years. And that's it. If anyone has any questions about this presentation or the proposal that we submitted, I'd be glad to entertain those questions.
Council? Hello, from my part, it's been a pleasure working with, with you and ABIP. Thank you very much for taking the time to.
Sure.
I have one clarification. Sorry, I was thinking about, so the additional certification that we don't get right now, the, we have the, the, from you all, we have a bid for services. It would be additional hours to do that?
It would be, for the, especially the first year gathering and the, all the information. A lot of it we would depend on the staff to do.
Okay. So do we have, do we have any information about the additional cost if we wanted to get, if we wanted to add that service?
Not tonight.
We would have that later.
We can get that too.
Submit a bid for that and we'll next to you.
And I understand also that they were going to provide that service as a discount so that they could make sure that they, their last bullet point for client retention stay, stay on.
I was just trying to think if the timeline, if, like, for example, if we're trying to go out for May 1, would there even be time to get the audit done?
Well, that's, that's an excellent question.
The, it is due, it would be due six, to GFOA, six months after your. It is due, it would be due to GFOA six months after your year-end, so it would have to be submitted by March 31st. Sometimes they allow a thirty-day extension, so if you wanted to file for the first time, they would give you an extension through the end of April. So it would be ready by May.
It would be ready by May. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we will move to the consent agenda.
I have a motion, I'd first like to remove 4.03.
Okay.
Move to adopt consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Gavin, second from Wendy. Any discussion, counsel? All favor?
Can we also either correct what we moved forward to that? Before we adopt that?
Sir, if there's a contractual issue, just...
There is not. Well, the title issue is there.
Is it subsequent to the issue?
Oh.
Okay, then just to further that, we can do a contractual. Okay. Any other discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And we'll bring up 4.03, Discussion of Possible Action Indicate No Opposition to Proposed Road Closure on Stratsford Drive for the Zilker Relays Event on September 6, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Zilker Relays Austin Center for Events. Gavin, would you like to...
I'm saying I'm proposing to...
Fair enough.
I'll consider it as a consideration of the opportunity.
Fair enough. Would you like, would you like to make a motion?
No.
I move to indicate no opposition to the proposed road closure on Stratsford Drive for the Zilker Relays Event on September 6, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Zilker Relays Austin Center for Events.
Motion from Wendy, do we have a second, counsel?
Second.
A second from Amy. Discussion?
What would happen if we closed off while the road at the same time? They were having a spin. That's what's going to happen, is all that traffic on Stratsford is going to come through Rollingwood, right?
No, they're...
Right.
Go ahead.
It's four hours, so it's a Friday evening.
Six to ten, yeah.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
All in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. We will, sorry, guys, we will bring up 5.01, Executive Session, Pursuit of the Texas Government Code Section, 551.071, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Open Meetings Act.
Time.
Oh, sir, thank you. The time is eight fifteen. We are out of executive session at eight thirty. No's. And we are going to bring up 6.01, Discussion on a 2019-2020 Budget Process. Amber, would you mind?
Sure, let me take this off, let you know that Gavin, the mayor, and I and Abel have started to meet as department heads and have started to take their base budgets. So we're developing the base budgets, and just to let you all know that any things that were exceptional items last year are not going to be part of this year's base budget if they were not completed, or if they were completed, they will not be part of the next year's base budget. So be thinking about those exceptional items that you might have for the upcoming year. But I do want to have the mayor briefly tell you about the recent rating of your state firms' SMP. And they basically kind of created a roadmap for us to maintain our Level A bond rating, and if we don't take some of the steps they recommended, then we feel, and James Gillie, our financial advisor, feels that we may take a step back, or we may lose some traction on our bond rating, and so we just want to make sure we're maintaining and preserving and moving forward.
We're not giving credit, we took some of these steps last time.
So if I can, to answer your question, we, as a, mostly you, as a council, bless you, as a city, we took some great steps to maintain, maintain our bond rating. As a matter of fact, if we hadn't taken the steps that we have over the last eighteen months, two years, then almost certainly we would have slid back in our rating this last year.
What we did with our budget.
So not just with our budget, but also, and this was a pleasant surprise, and you guys all deserve a pat on the back for this, but the undertaking of a capital improvements plan. So the IIP, for instance, the fact that that's in process for us was a, was a big thumbs up for us. I guess largely what we're talking about here from the SMP, what they want to see is a level of mid- and long-term stability, right? And so they put these metrics in place. Does the city have a kind of a forward-looking view? The problem, potential problem that was flagged with our, by the SMP for us is that our budget process and, you know, kind of how we see our finances and plan for our financial future is relatively short-term, right? We start planning this upcoming budget for, well, now, right? We haven't necessarily done a level of forecasting or planning for what may come five, ten years down the road. You know, as we've undertaken, you know, some of these comprehensive approaches to planning, the Parkmaster Plan, the IIP, one of the things that I talked briefly with Amber and Abel about is starting the process considering a long-term financial plan for the city, both financial planning as well as endeavor planning. These types of mid- and long-term plans are what we really need to focus on. Those were probably our biggest upsides, I guess, for maintaining, and the biggest suggestions for improving from James Gillie were, again, a focus on mid- and long-term financial planning, but also trying to figure out additional revenue streams for the city. The single worst mark we received was our reliance as a community on our ad form, so our taxes, right, our property taxes. The short term, or the short answer to that is we've got to figure out a way to help offset some of the burden on largely our residents, right? And that's part of the...
Part of that. That's part of us.
It's a level, so as it was...
Part of them.
As it was explained, A, it's a lack of diversification in that regard, and the fact that we rely so very heavily on ad form and property taxes versus, I guess, larger sales tax, really. But they classified it as other revenue streams. So it's a sole reliance on a single string, or heavy reliance on a single string, that really got us. I think they would, you know, if we had no property taxes and relied solely on sales tax, for instance, we'd get a similar, similar dank, so to speak. But it's a matter of diversifying those revenue streams and strengthening, basically strengthening our overall financial profile.
And what are they looking for in a long-term financial?
That is, that's an excellent question, and I don't know, I don't know that we know the, we don't know the specific answer to that yet.
There are specific guidelines, too, what would qualify as a long-term financial plan, and they're spelled out by GFOA, and we would follow that guideline, and then they're out, probably for, that'll probably be a budget request to do, have somebody come in and do one of those for us.
I guess if I, if I could, it's a lot harder.
Uh, yes.
Maintain the budget reserve, when we was pulling up, I talked about budget reserve last time, but that's not a good...
It's not the only thing.
That's part of what it would be. Also, in like structuring your debt, making like, that you're borrowing in line with your capital from a plan, do you have a deal? I spent a few weeks because I looked at the guidelines, I'm not familiar with doing that, but long-term financial forecasting, you know, what, do you have businesses that might come in that might impact your value?
Are you taking steps, are you taking steps to encourage business growth? You know, again, I suspect strongly that the certification process that Jan spoke to earlier would probably play a pretty critical role, which is one of the reasons why I was trying to coax the conversation with maybe a bond rating.
We keep the same SMP.
We only go out for bond ratings if we are borrowing. And so we went out when we refunded, that 2012 be, was watered. And that's why we went out for bond rating.
Which I'm not sure if you were, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you were here for that discussion, but the action that counsel took ultimately achieved a cash flow savings of $2.6 million for the city. I knew you were here for taking the action, I wasn't here, I wasn't sure if you referred me to the...
It ended up being $2.6 million, like, that's really what it is.
So those kinds of really, I mean, the truth of the matter, really responsible decisions that counsel has made over the course of the last few months, it's, it was eye-opening to hear the conversation and to have that conversation with the SMP and see that the decisions that you guys are making are, they're critically impactful to everything we're endeavoring to do, both in the near term, midterm, and for the long term, if you see.
Well, speaking of forecasting and budgeting, when I was researching how other cities look at their building and improvement projects, one of the things that I noticed that other cities do that I haven't seen that we do, I'm wondering if we do it, is that when there's a development project, say a new construction in Rollingwood, in the form, it's, it actually has a value, like the new taxable value or an improvement value. And then that way, you see what's coming up on the tax roll, and so is that something that we could implement with my permit now through the budget process?
So legislature just took that, because those cities who do that, they will charge their building permit fees based on the construction value, and the legislature just took that ability away.
Oh.
And so we charge per square foot, and that's what most cities will be turning to. And so I just went to the TML budget and tax rate workshop, and so that was one of the things they said that they use as our tools to help them forecast, but it will likely go away.
But that's just, you're really talking about...
Yeah, just like knowing what is going to be on the rolls next year, because we know these, like, the endeavor project could be on the rolls, and we know the value is this, so when it closes, we're going to have this taxable value.
So we would know through our relationships with endeavor, but if we didn't, if y'all didn't have those relationships and knew what endeavor was bringing on, there's no way the city could ask for that information.
We can't track it.
The way the cities are dating it now is on the building permit forms and the way they're charging their building fees.
Can, are we allowed to track it?
You can do it for commercial, you just can't do it for residential.
You can't do it for residential, like, a new fifteen thousand square foot house is going to be this taxable value.
That, I mean, when I first got on the council, we used our monthly report that showed all of the new construction, how the value of each property, and then I can't remember why it went away, but we did use that.
Of what?
Probably, I mean, I think it was 2014 or 2015.
Probably not the price to plan to build that into your budget, but it would be mine.
It doesn't market...
Yeah, it's...
Okay. Sorry.
But no, it's, it would certainly encourage everybody to continue to be forward-looking. I think it's critical for us as a city to be mindful of what the mid-amol.
One of the things that I talked to Gavin about last year in the budget process is could we charge rent in some line items for bigger picture things that we know we're going to have, like, we know we're going to have to replace vehicles, so we charge rent for those things every year, and then when it's time to replace the vehicle, we have it in these accounts. I would love to see something like that, be like our savings plan toward things that we know are going to need to be reinforced.
We do talk about that, I was like, I really didn't, she's very surprised.
You know the replacement's coming. Cedar Park does that, and they have a really, my system where they just kind of pay rent on them, and then when it comes time to replace it, that one's there, and you're not trying to figure out how to get it.
Does anybody have anything additional? No? Amber?
Thank you, Laura.
Thanks, counsel. 6.02, Especially Possible Action Regarding A Proposal From The Rollingwood Park Trust To Operate, Maintain, and Lease The City Of Rollingwood Athletic Facilities And To Authorize The City Administrator To Negotiate An Agreement For The Mayor's Signature. All right. So you guys, well, you guys are here for the presentation. We started the conversation. A large part of this, really, in my mind, ties into, again, kind of, I hate to say diversifying our revenue streams, but really helping the park get to a place where it is, to borrow GDR's terminology, revenue neutral. One of the things that we've discussed, and the park commission has discussed quite a bit, is how to bring donations, bring money into the, into the park. I don't, I don't think anyone's suggestion here is to turn it into, you know, a commercial enterprise by any stretch, but certainly figuring out how to bring more money into the system to realize some of these improvements that we've talked about along the way. I think there's a tremendous amount of upside there. Almost as importantly, you know, we hear a lot of people talk about the park for all, and I think that's probably the most critical aspect of what can only be described as the city's most valuable asset, right? It's a figurative and literal heart of our community. Why not give it every bell and whistle that we can to foster a greater level of community involvement in a space that we all own? The idea there, again, to be, to do it intelligently and responsibly, not just for us today, but for what we as a community want to see, again, going right back to the mid and long term. From that standpoint, I think there are a lot of details that need to be fleshed out with what the group has proposed, but conceptually, I really hope that the council will understand the merits of having a specialty group come in and help us manage the aspects of the maintenance and the leasing, taking some of the burden, the maintenance burden off of our public works, really removing some of that burden from the ball clubs with regards to maintenance. That's not their specialty. Their specialty is teaching and allowing the kids to enjoy, enjoy the kids... Their specialty is, uh, is, is teaching and, uh, allowing the kids to, to enjoy, uh, enjoy the games. But also largely seeing the bigger picture on how we can really maximize, uh, maximize the heart of our city. With that, please.
So has the park commission even had a chance to discuss this proposal?
Um, I was not at the last park commission meeting, but I spoke with Tony.
He did not. It, it didn't come in time to be posted and listed on our agenda. So we received a copy of it electronically after the meeting. My, my concern, this is, this is vastly different than the way we've had it set up in the past. Um, if the park commission hasn't had a chance to evaluate it, we're just now seeing it. There have been no public meetings, no opportunity for the public to be aware of the things that they're proposing to do, which are very much different than what we've done in the past. Um, I, I am, would not be comfortable going forward and, and I think we need to do more work on it and, and have more input from the community before we turn forward and so on. As I say, it feels to me like we are potentially relinquishing a lot of control. And that concerns me. Uh, I think we need to make sure that we evaluate it, that, you know, to your point maybe, that the park commission has been involved in this in the past and I don't think we've given them the opportunity to, to have any input on this at this point.
Is, so the lease is over August thirty first, currently?
Correct.
So we do need to start working on it, um.
Right, but we don't have to.
I think.
Turn it over to the.
I agree, we need to, we need to have parameters around it. We need to start working on, um, the agreement. So I think that that, this action item allows the city administrator to start working on the agreement, to be part of the next park commission, uh, meeting and get the input from them there. But we have to start working on it if we're going to negotiate and get an agreement done by August thirty first.
I understand that, but the way this is worded right now, it says to negotiate an agreement for the mayor's signature. So it does not provide any, necessarily any opportunity to come back to council for us to see another version of it. It's, you know, releasing it to, to be done.
Is that true?
Well, it is, it is regarded or worded in that way, but I, to your point, um, time is of the essence. That said, you don't want to rush into a big decision. And the fact that the park commission hasn't reviewed this and, and, uh, held a, an, an open meeting on this, perhaps the better action for council to consider rather than starting the negotiation on a definitive agreement is maybe more along the lines of, uh, a, a letter of intent, so to speak, right? To start fleshing out some more of these details or some kind of memorandum to start fleshing out these details, uh, that, that's maybe non-binding at this point.
Yeah, I mean, the idea of us approving the concept of having an agreement like this so they could go forward, because right now there's not even an entity on the other side for us to sign an agreement with. I mean, they haven't informed that yet. Um, so I don't have a problem with that. I just don't like the idea of just saying, sure, go ahead and do whatever.
I think that's, I think that's an excellent point. And when you bring that up, I, I suspect strongly that that's the, that, that's the intent of the group as well.
Because, I mean, close, not living across the street anymore from the park, but I know absolutely that the idea of having advertising signs on the fence, um, would not go over well with her at all.
Uh, so with this agenda item that we have here, um, just for the sake of, um, making sure that we, you know, can start working on this, can we, do we just get a count like, uh, the city administer, administrator direction to start working on putting a contract together to take to the park commission and, and they get the input there? Um, and then we don't have to make a motion that is written here, but we can give direction that we want to start that contract.
Yes.
Start writing it out, start moving it forward, and then we can have the park commission input at the next meeting. It can come back to city council. We can get the parameters together that everybody's happy with. But we need to start working on it, I think, immediately if we're going to be able to negotiate it. Last year, or not last year, but three years ago, it took a considerable amount of time to negotiate the contract. And let's not forget, this is our only response to the proposal, to the request for proposal. So, um, wanted to get it in front of you all as soon as possible, have as much public input. That's why we approached the park commission to attend, um, but wanted to start working on this immediately since it is our only proposal received.
I, I think we need to make sure that there's information provided. I mean, this is not the greatest time for community input in the middle of the summer, but at least make sure that the public is aware that we're talking about this because I can see concerns about the advertising, about having a restaurant in the park, about, you know, I mean, those are things that, that people are liable to have concerns about. And I want to make sure that we have public meeting available so people can understand what we're talking about and provide their input.
I think we all saw this together at the same time right now, and so it is a lot to take in and it's a different way of doing things. So I'm glad that Amber chose to bring it to council right now so we could start the discussion, take it to park commission who's had a chance to review it, kind of hear council's input. So I would like to see, um, you move forward with, um, getting that direction of, um, writing out a contract, working with labels to write out a contract and get it to park commission for their agenda and their input.
And maybe, maybe instead of referring to it in terms of, of a contract, it sounds very permanent at this point. Maybe get some little instruction to work on.
The terms of engagement.
Pre-merits of what it's going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we got to get that started because the reality is, is the next park commission is in two weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
And we have fourth of July where everybody's going to be gone.
Maybe, maybe the city may be more of an LOI, um, approach, really lay out what the parameters of the adaptations are before you get into those.
Yeah.
And I, I, to your point, I, I gathered from that conversation, they're actually hoping the city will take that initiative and, and put a framework around, around it. I think it's probably a really good course of action.
My primary comments are related to, we've got a R P for a five-year term and the, the proposal has a fifteen-year anticipated term. I would like to see minimums for the capital improvement tier with the, the five years.
They're wanting us to tell them.
Yeah, so that's.
So I think it just goes back to what, yeah, they want us to tell them what the.
So what I, what I think it should be is I think, if, if this is the type of investment they want to make, I, I really appreciate a neighbor who hasn't even lived here that long. This new tier is wanting to bring in the resources of his company and the people he's working with. Um, I, I'd like to see the initial investment be, for the first five years, be a hundred thousand minimum and then the other two tiers be fifty thousand minimum. Just so that we can make sure that, uh, if for some reason the cafe, coffee bar doesn't end up being a revenue generator or if people move on from wanting to work on sponsorships for the park and all those kinds of things, that we still have the same level of quality of service for those other ten years that we've had in the past of capital improvements. So, um, I really, and I really appreciate that, that's a, like he's saying, it's a minimum, but I, I'd like to see the, the tiering that, that has minimums based on the five years. And I really think that if we're going to do, um, more than five years, and even with five years, with this, with a new type of structure, I really would like to see the mayor get to appoint one of the board members and it be a voting board member. Um, because that would give both of the, both the Little League and girls softball have two votes. Kraft gets to appoint two people and then there's a tiebreaker. And the mayor can either decide to appoint themselves, um, or to appoint someone that at least gives the city a voice. And I think that's something where we can, can look at how it gets set up. But that's, I, I, um, I have a little bit of hesitation from an optics perspective, given the number of people in our community who have volunteered and also put, as to your point, put a lot of money into our community over the years to let one person who's putting in a hundred thousand dollars and a lot of resources. Like I'm, it's not to say I'm not appreciative of, of what he's willing to do, but, um, we have a lot of other people who've put in a lot of time and money in the past as well. And so I just think it's a balance on that board and, in recognizing.
I think it's, I think it's an excellent point. And my, my guess is that's probably been a negotiating, uh, the way, the way that was handled, uh, on the other hand. I think you're, you're right. And, and I think it's probably a little telling that they, they named us a trust. Uh, I suspect that there's probably some little conversation, uh, in there about this almost looking like, well, like an endowment than a commercial enterprise, so to speak, so.
Well, it's not commercial, it's non-profit softball, but.
Right, uh, right. And I, I, absolutely. I, the reason I point that out is, is because there had been conversation even just on this diet just now about, uh, things in terms of, of maybe commerce. So, uh, in any case, uh, I think it's a real valid point.
I have a hesitation in requiring that, an extra fifty thousand a year three, is that what you're saying, fifty thousand?
No, the, the. Cause the, our R P was for five years. And so, um, like right now, isn't it, it, how do they?
I mean, as long as they had an option to terminate, I mean, if you got into it for another year, you sunk a hundred grand and you haven't made it on back. He's not going to make it on back.
He's not going to make it on back.
That's what you're saying, he's in for another hundred.
But so the Little League, both Little Leagues and the cafe where it was fifteen years at seventy-five hundred dollars, they pay a hundred and thirteen thousand at seventy-five hundred dollars a year.
So it's also the revenue from everything. So it's not them coming up with the money out of their pocket. They're.
And in fifteen years, obviously there need to be some, a new roof on or some kind of improvement needed to the structure. So I think that that's a, a good, you know, if it's doing well and they're not going to terminate, then they should be able to put some money back into the facility that needs updating.
I think we were just required on that.
Yeah, but I think that you're just pointing out some things that maybe to put into that, uh, what we're thinking about it right now as a council.
But we also need to get our police chief to take a look at whether or not there would be any added burden on security or, um, you know, police staffing with everything that they're talking about adding to, so. It's a little different enterprise than what we have going on up there right now.
Okay. Hello? With that in mind, Marion, you've taken some time to, to, do you have any thoughts that you, you want to discuss now or you want?
Sure. I, I mean, I think it's early days and this is.
I'm sorry, just, just to make sure it's easy on Robin. Thank you.
Marina Breland, twenty-eight oh eight Rollingwood Drive. I serve on the park commission and have had a brief amount of time to look at this. It's a lot to take in. It's, it's definitely, I think, and I just met J R after his presentation. And he's obviously a very successful entrepreneur and a big picture guy. And I think that's what we need. And he thinks big, dreams big, and I think we probably need to do more of that. But realistically, we also need to do our due diligence on this for the reasons you mentioned. I think fifteen years, can the city even enter into a fifteen-year contract? We asked for a five-year proposal and, um, again, it's early days, but we also asked for financial projections, which there were, there were none. So that concerns me too. Um, I think we feel very confident with Little League and girls softball because of our past relationship. But I, I do have concerns too, as, as some of you mentioned, about, um, us losing a significant amount of control. I think it would help us to share some of the burden, especially if he has resources that could help with scheduling. That is a huge, um, problem and that we've never really been able to wrap our arms around it. I don't see that we have the capabilities to do that moving forward, given our resources now, to be honest. So that would be huge. But I, but I am concerned on the structure, again, that was brought up. So the less see and operator would be Newco, who would be girls softball, Little League, and Rollingwood Park Trust. Rollingwood Park Trust would be controlled by J R Kraft or one of his affiliates. Well, I would like to know more about that. And if he has three board members and softball has one, Little League has one, then yes, he has sixty percent voting control. That, that concerns me. Again, I think this is a big vision kind of thing and we need to, to, to do our due diligence to narrow some of the focus on the day-to-days, how this will look and how it will affect our neighbors. I think we're all ready in realizing we need change and it's scary, but I think at this point it's for the good. But we also need to, as we referenced in the park master plan, the importance of, uh, keeping in the forefront a nod to the history of our park. So while we have a cafe that sounds, um, sounds like a neat idea, this is the Doyle Mar Field House. And his family and local people paid for that and donated for that to be built. And so I don't want that to get lost either. So I mean, it's a big picture. They have a termination date of August first, actually, on this. But they say if we're negotiating, then they'll, they'll, they are happy to, you know, extend that. But, um, as we all know, things move slowly with the municipality, so I am concerned about that. And I think having a term sheet or parameters first before we start attorneys on it would be wise and helpful. And to get your input to, to park mission would be helpful too. Because I, I mean, I, I don't want to, as y'all were said, get lost in the grass tonight, but there's lots of questions about merchandising and charging for parking and stuff that we need to talk about. I mean, and, and it's early days and I know they were rushed to put this together. And time is of the essence, but I hate to be rushed on something so important and something potentially so amazing as this could be. But we need to do our due diligence for ourselves and our neighbors. So that's, that's.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to authorize the city administrator to negotiate a letter of intent outlining the general parameters of an agreement for, uh, the Rollingwood Park Trust Incorporated to operate, maintain, and lease the city of Rollingwood Athletic Facilities. Here that, uh, information.
We have a motion from Gavin. Do we have a second?
I second.
A second from Buck. Uh, discussion, council?
Uh, we just needed to get direction and we need to make that motion so that the optics on it weren't that we were.
Let's go on to a letter of intent because I think you put in to a letter of intent.
Just, sorry, just to be clear, you, you refer to basically non-binding letter of intent.
Right, correct.
Start exploring the conversation.
Yeah, it's just all of these things that we've talked about, you're putting in a document for them to, you can't be able to start going back and forth and have something go to the park commission before you even get to any sort of negotiated contract.
So will the letter of intent be signed and sent to Rollingwood Park Trust prior to the parks commission meeting or will it have the input from the parks commission meeting?
I would, I would, I hope that the intent would be to have the input from the parks commission. And before even finalizing it, I think that the term sheet could be discussed before, uh, being, uh, executed. And then it would be, uh, a kind of a final term sheet, uh, from the city could be adopted by the city council in July. I, I, my, the hope and expectation being that we can be far enough down the road if in fact both parties are willing to do. to do a short-term extension of the current lease terms, maybe for a month or two, so that we can get a final definitive document in place. That that might be the best way to go, would also give the public some time to weigh in.
Doesn't our current lease go month to month until it's terminated? I think it's already in the provision of the contract, so we could work on this and make sure that it's right if they're willing to, if they're not terminating, which they're not, so.
By my impression, I think that would be, I would feel more comfortable having more input, more data points, and of course, due diligence is going to be paramount to making sure everyone is comfortable.
So can I interject just something? Normally, my definition of a successful council meeting is where I don't have to say anything, so I'm already blowing that. But it seems to me what you're looking for, because I appreciate the non-binding letter of intent, but from a negotiation standpoint, that's looking at sending something back to them saying, this is what we're looking for. Would it be, given the time limitations, a better approach to give authority to the mayor to negotiate a non-binding memorandum of understanding between the parties? So that way, what's coming back to you is not what the city's looking for matched up against what they've put in their R F P, but rather what both parties have decided is an appropriate approach for a final document.
So I would amend your motion to have a non-binding memorandum of intent?
Memorandum of understanding.
Of understanding.
Is that, I'm not trying to force y'all to make a decision, I'm just saying, from a standpoint of timing and trying to get where you want to get, that might be the better approach.
That sounds like what we're talking about.
Right, and it's not what I heard, and it just could, maybe my ears are.
Did you get the? I need to put the. Very good, perfect, thank you. Any additional discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, thank you very much, and we'll see at the next park commission meeting. Okay, council, six point oh three, discussion possible action regarding your request for proposal from auditor A B I P. And authorize the city administrator to enter into an agreement with A B I P for the mayor's signature.
I move to authorize the city administrator to negotiate an agreement for the mayor's signature regarding a proposal from Art Technical Services, L L C A T S, to provide plan review inspections and professional.
Sorry, we're at six point oh three.
Okay, sorry, I crossed that one out, I meant to, okay, I move to authorize the city administrator to enter an agreement with A B I P for the mayor's signature.
Who wants it? We have a motion from Amy, sorry, a motion from Wendy and a second from Amy, discussion council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you, council. Thank you, Janet, for the word Wendy. Six point oh four, discussion possible action regarding a proposal from A T S to provide plan review inspections and professional consultation services and to fulfill positions building official for the city and to authorize the city administrator to negotiate an agreement for the mayor's signature. Wendy, I suspect we know where you are.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to authorize the city administrator to negotiate an agreement for the mayor's signature regarding a proposal from Art Technical Services to provide plan review inspections and professional consultation services and to fulfill the position as building official for the city and to authorize the city administrator to prepare that document.
Hi, second. We have a motion from Wendy and a second from Buck, discussion council?
We need to talk about one of the things that Amber said she had, because right now, that proposal does not cover nearly everything that we need a building inspector to do.
And I echo that, I'm probably going to vote for this. Yeah, I agree, and I was looking through when they were talking, I was looking through our zone. Beautiful, chapter fourteen, again, and there are a number of things, as we know, that are intertwined in fourteen that come to come up in front of us as issues, plan review, but they don't really go with that. And so what's the point for that?
Yeah, I don't even, I don't even think that it's a matter of what's in the zoning code and what's in the building code. I think that what they were talking about is the international code, and that's the only thing that they're looking at. So anything that we have that's ordinance-based, other than we approve, you know, the international planning code or whatever, I don't think they're talking about looking at any of that. So setbacks, masonry percentage, tree ordinance, none of that.
I know that hasn't in fourteen, but I don't know if we're all in.
Building regulations, chapter three.
Yeah, building heights, I mean, we've got all kinds of stuff in our code that's not, you know, standard.
So. I don't think we can not, I always feel like we can't not go with them, because we have to have somebody reviewing these things, but it's not.
We need way more than just that, right?
Right, and so in going through this process, we met with A T S, of course, we were only notified on June, what, no, May ninth. So we got to work right away, and it's been a back and forth with A T S, for them to understand what we're doing. We also have had a learning curve to understand what we're doing at P D G. We've given so much away to P D G that really our staff has no idea what they're doing for us. And so that's in the learning process, going back and forth with A T S describing what P D G is doing for us, can they do it for us? And so we visually settled on a reasscure of work to which then I discovered they weren't going to review for zoning or architectural review. So I asked them, well, how do other cities do it? And we described this architectural review work, which, again, I was concerned about timing, and I'm also concerned about, you know, favors or resonance being asked to like, can you please approve my. Right, and there's not going to be any, so, yeah, I don't think that's a good idea. So I reached out to K three to ask, and it looks like they do provide some services. I want to ask Cory to write out specifically what they do review today for us, which will include setbacks, tree ordinance, basically, P D G is not doing tree ordinance, that's all on me and Kerry, we're doing that right now. We.
That's probably not a good point either.
Well, we will have a city arborist, we are asking, we are asking the citizens, it's not in the ordinance today, but we are asking them to have an arborist prepare their tree protection plan and identify their trees. So I feel like we're getting good information, so I feel confident in our review, but that's not saying we won't. Mistakes.
There's going to be mistakes, and that's okay, this is, it's going to be okay, because we appreciate you taking on this big issue. So I know you have my support completely, and I know you're working really hard to get this all figured out, and I really appreciate it.
And I, you know, I said remain confident in front of A T S, I didn't want them to be spun up so they wouldn't submit a proposal, and then we really are in trouble. So I feel like we have a good proposal from them, and they're familiar with that, looks like, I think they were reluctant to offer us those services on paper, but I do feel like, I feel like they can help us maybe through.
Place to bridge.
Maybe, possibly, K three says they need these services, so we might need to contract with K three for consulting engineering in the meantime. I would like to hire an engineer or a professional planner and get them in-house, but again, it's like, where are we going to keep them? You have space challenges, we talked about just setting up, maybe taking my office, putting the cubicles there, or putting cubicles out here, maybe anywhere elsewhere, there are a lot of moving parts, and it's keeping me up at night, I mean.
We could give them another trailer.
We could do another trailer.
Maybe Endeavor has an office in their new building.
I think Kerry has really stepped up.
I do, I do want to commend Kerry, she has stepped up, she likes this, she's catching up, like I said, to reviewing the tree ordinance, and she's very smart, she's got her degree in international relations, so I have a lot of confidence in her, and she might be a possibility to train up, and if you get her certified as a planner.
That's what Wesley Hills has, is they have somebody, a woman there who's in charge of planning and development, and she reviews for these things. While the building inspector is only qualified, I mean, is the only one qualified to look at the.
It's, that's right.
Really in-depth stuff, zoning things that somebody on staff could look at and understand.
And to Amber's, to Amber's point, and just, we as a community, over the course of the years, have made decisions to outsource a lot of, a lot of the decision-making, a lot of the oversight, that most communities would at least have, well, largely in-house, have a high-level oversight in-house. And what I think what we're experiencing right now is pretty good indication as to why a lot of communities decide to keep.
Staff over.
That's right. So I think, you know, I think Amber's identified a pretty critical, a pretty critical aspect of maybe how, as a, from an administrative point of view, we should consider evolving.
So would it be helpful for us at the same time to have the city attorney reviewing our zoning ordinance to see what we need to concurrently fit into our building code?
Well, so.
Not now.
Okay, because that's the question I asked them, basically, is, I mean, I understand Sarah heard that they're only applying international code, that's not what I heard, I heard that they're, I specifically asked that question of what are they applying? They're applying our building code, and our building code, including whatever is unique about our city, that's what they said. So they're applying international building code, which, and still recently, our own building official was applying the building code that we had passed. So I will just say that I think that, I think that there's an important component here of moving through what it is that they can, like the services that they can provide, and then Amber being able to identify the stopgaps and training people up. But I mean, I'm just, I'm confused about, like, we're both hearing the same conversation. What is your impression, Amber, are they only applying international building code, or are they applying our city building codes as?
As long as it's in your code. I think it's pretty much international building code, I don't think anything related to like drainage, of course, all of these that's still going to live there. You know, they're going to do vertical, anything that's like flat, you know, with regard to setbacks and where they can build a structure.
Talked about masonry.
Yeah.
That's in our, that's in our building code, but he just said they're not going to.
You're not going to have to worry about that anyway, because I just like, you're just took away your authority directly.
So, I mean, I just, I was just confused, because I, I feel like I asked that question, and the way that they answered it, I was understanding, okay, they're going to take our building code, and that's going to inform, that they have people who are going and applying, you know, the same uniform international code, and they're also going to be informed by our building code. But the issue is, is that a lot of our zoning ordinances include a lot of building code elements that are also in our building code.
But he said as long as it's noted in the building code, if it's a zoning thing, you note it in the building code, then they can go and look at it, but they're not going to go and look at our zoning regulations that they have. How could be noted in the international building code?
So my, my understanding is similar to Wendy and Amy, that if, if in fact it's a more typical portion of a building code, even if it's nuanced for our community, it's within, it's within the scope that they'll be reviewing and training themselves up on to recognize and to review. It's, the idea, the impression that I get is that they're not going to slide over to chapter fourteen zoning and start figuring out what needs to be integrated into their, into their review assessment process. So if you move it within the, you know, the four walls, so to speak, of our building code.
I heard him say he doesn't want to deal with MOGS.
Yeah, I don't think any of us would like to deal with MOGS.
I plan to get P D G, A T S, K three, and I'll be myself, Kerry, Ron, all of our moves together as soon as possible to get a full understanding of what P D G is reviewing for and not reviewing for, and then identify those people on our team who can fill that. So we can go through the, our building code and say, here's our setbacks, you know, like we know all of these things are in our code, and this is what we want reviewed, do you do this? No, you do this, and then assign it. And then we can assign it in my turn, and now who needs to look at that at what point in the process?
Guys, I'm going to get us out here and all-time record if we're ready to.
Aye, let's do it.
Do we have to go down there?
We have a motion. We have a motion in a second, do we have further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council, working with A T S, and we will, Amber will make sure to get additional clarification for some of these questions. Six point oh five, we received this agreement late yesterday and haven't had time to review it. I would encourage council to consider postponing this item.
Should we do the same sort of thing that we did with the list though, where we allow you to figure it all out and bring it back to us?
Is there?
She going to do that anymore?
I suspect we'd be, we'd be taking exactly those actions to kind of do a markup and put our thoughts together.
So it's just council direction to do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Can we do that without council direction?
No, you don't need formal action.
Okay.
We'll make sure it's back to you.
Okay, you don't want a motion?
Not unless y'all want one, it's not necessary.
Okay, so we're good, we're good for postponing this item through June, July? We have a motion from Sarah to postpone.
Sarah?
And a second from Amy, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, council, six point oh six, possible action review and comment on the Campo Regional Arterial Study.
This is my item.
Yes, Karen.
I just had a few background comments to give. So Campo has been working on a regional arterial study, and there's a link up now too, which I realized I forgot to look it up in the agenda. It goes to the open house that's currently happening, and the open house is through July, I think, the day after. Anyway, the regional arterial study has been processed now for over a year, there've been a bunch of workshops, local elected officials have gone, there's been a few other public meetings. Back in November, we voted as a body to comment on the study as it was released at that point, and I drafted a lot of the letters that's attached here, and then I think just because of the reality of the holidays, we never got it signed and in before the comment period was over. So most of the comments that I previously put together and maybe.
So most of the comments that I previously put together and maybe contributed as well, I just updated them for the current maps that are up and added some additional comments. The reason that I think it's important to comment on this regional arterial study is that effectively what Campo is doing is they are studying all their arterial roadways in our six-county region. And they are doing this study, and then that is what they are going to push up to be the Campo 2045 by-plan. So the comments are a little heavy in some ways, but they're effectively preparing us to comment on the Campo 2045 by-plan. And one of my big concerns is just the fact that there hasn't been an actual description of MOPAC south of the river included in any of the documentation yet. So we don't know what assumptions they're making about what that roadway looks like in planning these vision documents and estimating our safe. So that's been one of the big issues. The other big issue is that in, for the first time in this open house, the maps that are released include reversible lanes, Donkey's Road, which I mentioned before, so you can go look at them now. And so I included comments about that in here to update, because we just haven't really had information to know that we need what exactly to comment on other than to know that there may be impacts to our businesses that are negative by taking away that center and making it reversible lane. So when I was at the Westlake Chamber Board Meeting today earlier, I also, I have like five minutes as the executive issue number where I can present a few things. And I directed the board at the Westlake Chamber also that they need to look at this and maybe impact businesses along Donkey's Road. So they were looking at it. So these are the comments I have put together. I also kind of rehashed what we've done on MOPAC so far, because one of the things I've discovered through this process is that there's not a lot of overlap in what Campo understands is going on with what we've commented on MOPAC South and what they're doing right now, getting ready for the 2045 plan. So it effectively gets all of the, like the volume of work that our city has done for the last five years on the record, moving it into the next lane. But would love to have comments or questions or are you moved to approve it?
I really appreciate all your work. I'm staying on top of this, and this is all your work, so credit, we're credited to you. One of the things I just thought of, and you may have thought of it too, but maybe didn't want to add it in, is the 360, 2244 divergent diamond. Could we like amend the letter to include comments about that? Because they have...
It's not in here.
Okay, it is.
Yeah, it's on page, I was thinking, I totally remember.
Did you?
It's on page eight, second paragraph.
I missed it. Okay. And then I was tasked with writing something about pedestrian access on B caves. And so I would like to know if I can still have the Council's, if we could add in something about creating a multi-use path on B caves in this line.
Yeah, and one, one comment too is that there's this clarification currently on this open house document that when, when all of these roadways get put into 2045 plan, that's when they're going to add the multimodal elements. So they haven't considered multimodal in this study. So Wendy and I had talked about potentially going ahead and kind of preemptively stating, when you pull this up into the 2045 plan, these are some of the multimodal elements that we think should be considered.
Twenty-two forty-four is actually, it's not a farmer market road. It's actually classified as an urban road. So it can have urban design for multimodal transportation and get bike pedestrians paths on there. But instead of an eight-foot sidewalk, could we go for a ten? Ask for a ten, make it part of it, have more access to our business districts.
I'm especially appreciative of page 12. Lady Caesar Chavez. I think that's a section that you have for me.
You were too passionate. Even though he's not here, he had two years of comments about Caesar Chavez.
He was out of spirit.
He did.
Thank you. One, one section gets my opinion. Move it.
Can I get, Sarah, do you have any comments or edits? Or I would need to authorize the mayor to submit comments to Campo on the Campo Regional Arterial Study. I guess, and also including one additional comment related to future pedestrian units.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Amy, a second from Wendy. Rob, do you need a repeat on that?
I do.
Okay. Question? I just, yeah, I think I moved to approve, uh, moved to authorize the mayor to sign the comments on the, sign and submit to Campo, the comments on the Campo Regional Arterial Study as presented, and also including an additional section related to future pedestrian.
Multimodal.
Multimodal.
Pedestrian bike.
Do we have a discussion, Council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Use six point oh seven, discussion possible action regarding recent failures in power service by Austin Energy to residents and sewer infrastructure in the city of Rollingwood.
This is also, I know, I know that there have been multiple power outage lately that have really affected one segment of our neighborhood. And maybe listen to, it doesn't affect me, but the lift station right across the street from me goes out every time, and then I get to listen to the generator that gets brought to power up the lift station until the power turned back on, which is really interesting. So my side of the street, all the power is still on, but the other side of the street where the lift station is off. So I have different, there was one resident who posted on the next door wondering, are other people frustrated about this? She also contacted me. We talked about it a little bit. And I, I added last minute, I forgot, I apologize, I forgot to add my links early. But there's a webpage that the city of Austin Energy has that talks about, that I added to the agenda, that talks about how they are financed. They don't earn any profit, they don't pay any federal income taxes. All the revenue benefit the customers of Austin Energy and the residents of the city of Austin. The primary financial benefit to the city of Austin is Austin Energy's transfer to the general fund, which is then allocated by the city council to municipal purposes such as police, fire, and parks. The amount is that our policy has ranged from 105 million to 110 million in recent years. So they definitely are generating billions of dollars of revenue based on what they have published. And I think that, I guess what I'm wondering is whether the council would want to act on behalf of our residents to request they come and do some significant investment in looking at why one section of our power grid keeps on going out every time we have a storm? Or whether that's something where we would encourage residents to be the customer who comments? Given the fact that they have a lot of revenue that they could be reinvesting and making sure that infrastructure is working.
Oh, my, I've just been complaining more, because it's been going out just randomly throughout the day on a regular basis.
Yes.
And it's really weird that it only affects my house on my block and not any of my neighbors or anybody behind me.
Our next-door neighbor had electricity, and we were out for three days, and across the street, everybody had electricity on our side. We're out for three days. So it's really, it's really strange, and it seems like it's the same 146 houses that get popped out, like where the breakers.
So when my neighbor's electricity goes out, mine doesn't. So it's like vice versa. So mine has been out.
You're connected to us.
It's kind of like, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
So I, I just feel like, I mean, I just wonder if it's a city function, if we should, if we should write an alert on behalf of the city that says, we would like you all to use part of your revenue to come and assess the infrastructure in our city and update wires so that we don't continue to have power issues.
I had a person come home, leave me at my house like two years ago, and they blew out in my face. I threw it away. Have a miracle.
Have a miracle.
Is the facility regulated so we can borrow energy from anywhere?
I would be, I would be happy to give Austin Utility a call on behalf of our citizens to let them know that obligation for services cuts both ways. And that I'd really like to see anybody providing service that our citizens are paying for to actually receive the full benefit of the service that our citizens are paying. So you said 146 houses. How do you know that's...
It just shows it on the Austin Energy. Whenever there's an outage, you go to their outage page, and it has a star there, and it says house is affected and it has a number, and it's always the same number.
Always 146. So that's very good information for them to say. It's the same 146 house, but every time, which means you have a system problem essentially.
Yes. That's where I think that it, like it's gotten to the point where...
Yeah, really. You have a problem essentially. What is you, what are you facing every time these 146 houses go on?
I think it's with the...
Yeah, what are you facing?
...the greenbelt, all the lines that come into the neighborhood go through the greenbelt. So I think something happens to the lines, and then we're like the breaker, so the rest of the power stays on. When ours trips.
So do we need to...
I think that's the question, I mean, I don't know, what is the thing that you know about that you're putting a mandate on? Then we can run it like saying, do you want to fix the lift station number?
I'll tell you what, it gets the call in front of my house, because they always show up with their lights on if it's my call. That's where you know. With the lights on and the guy screaming at night, they're always right there in front of my house.
And then the generator comes in front of my house.
The one I have that just crashed down, we get to hear the sire, or the alarm, or something.
Speaking of that, should the lift station at your house, we shouldn't talk about this. Should we put it on the agenda and have a backup generator on that lift station?
So Council, do we have action?
I, I guess I would just authorize the mayor to communicate Austin Energy and the city of Austin requesting...
Authorize the mayor to do his job.
That's what I think he's trying to do. You're already getting a lot of...
Please give the call.
Right on.
You say enough, boys.
It's a, with friends like these.
Thank you.
First night back in months.
The motion was to authorize the mayor to do his job in a second.
You're here.
Yeah, so I'm going to get to work.
I'm enjoying this already.
All in favor? Any opposed to that? Fantastic. The mayor is authorized to do his job. Moving to seven point oh one, update discussion, possible action regarding BK improvement project, Texas committed to co-sponsoring with the city of Rollingwood that will address the low water crossing flooding issues and add five lanes with shoulders and sidewalks throughout, throughout Rollingwood's portion of BK road.
I have one small update.
Perfect.
Bob Moore was on our panel this week, and so we were able to connect with him again about the status of the project. So he's putting in calls to continue looking. Amber's letter has an update as of May. And the new, so probably the biggest issue right now is that we have a new district engineer for our area from Tex dot, and he's cutting it on board. So I think everybody is at the same time trying to get him to put his focus on their projects, so it'll be a little bit before we get to answer.
Thank you.
If we're going to keep this item on here, which I think we should, but can we fix the wording of this so that it, I mean, right now it says then add five lanes with shoulders? We're not adding five lanes. We'd like expanding to five lanes.
That's very quick.
But that makes it sound like we're going to have, you know, Katy Freeway running through, move our neighbors.
I mean, we're going to move some traffic. Noted. Thank you. Any action, Council? No. Seven point oh two, update discussion, possible action, pass the resolution, request a meeting where to provide information or statement of position of the city to and/or to request information or analysis from relevant state and local officials in connection with proposed south MOPAC expansion.
So we had a meeting with, sorry. We had a meeting yesterday with, we said here Director Hollings time came and brought it.
D and P.
D and P and Justin.
Justin Moore.
And I'm forgetting somebody. Oh, and David Andrews came.
Oh, David Andrews.
Yeah. And so we mainly looked at some of the design improvements that they're proposing for the Barton Skyway area and the BK's entrance ramp, if you're heading south on. And so I think we haven't really had a chance to meet and kind of fully formulate whether we would submit a, anything formally to the Tex dot, but they did ask us at the end of the meeting, maybe jokingly, but maybe that, if we would put in a good word with Tex dot, because they said that they're still trying to get it approved through Tex dot. So it would basically provide, it would basically add, like the lane, if you're heading south on MOPAC and exited B caves and you're trying to get on MOPAC, it would extend the lane that you're in longer. And then the next ramp would also extend it to that lane. So it just widens B caves, or widens MOPAC in that area where there's kind of a trip point. And so we requested a couple of addition, additional variations, and they're supposed to send us heat maps that show how it's going, how the improvements are going to work. And Wendy did a great job of also encouraging them that we really want to support the MOPAC project fully, and when it doesn't have elevated lanes on it, that we'll be able to make it happen. I think she repeated it eight times.
I just wanted to be clear that we're really supportive of the project.
I regret missing, missing the meaning, but I've had an opportunity to review. And I think from what I've seen and what I understand, I think it's generally a benefit to our community. And the concept, as I understand it, being to increase the ability with this lane to for, for traffic to merge on south MOPAC. Thereby, again, expediting traffic moving from A to B and largely past a level of congestion that we see near our community, so.
I think that the plan that they're proposing to do is a plan that's compatible with all of their conditions, if you will, of MOPAC, whatever they do, whether it was wishbones, elevated lanes, or non-elevated lanes. This project was low-hanging fruit for them, that they could do that would mesh with all of them. And we can probably provide some congestion relief around our area.
Yeah, I agree with you. My impression is that it generally adds a benefit to our city. And for once, I would, I would like us to reach out to CTRMA, or encourage us to reach out to them and thank them for taking some positive action to help alleviate some of the traffic congestion that we see.
Robin, will you make copies of this for the Council?
I just don't really think that it's going to make that much difference, because that doesn't seem to me to be the location at which the congestion is occurring.
So to, I, you know, what I thought, I merge, I merge that frequently. And just adding an extended lane... And just having an extended lane within which to build up speed and to help negotiate that, that merge on South MoPAC, I, I, does it answer and fix all the issues with congestion through here? Absolutely not. But I do think it's a positive step forward. And to Wendy's point, it does seem, it seems like a low hanging piece for, to pluck. It'll fit into what we intend future plans to be.
And I appreciate that they have come to the city and they met with us and they wanted our input. And they were able to take some comments from Amy about possibly moving the exit sign up on 360 where there's more time for that to be a collector lane and some things that we can provide input that may be helpful. So I think this was a nice meeting for them to have with us and they're taking our input, which is appreciated.
Agreed.
It is like the segment between the river and 360 is the 23rd most congested roadway in Texas. And to, between which, between the river and 360. So, I mean, I think, you know, a constant kind of comment that we've had in our comments about the MoPAC South project is that it hasn't necessarily addressed the actual congestion right here. It's just letting people who live down the slatter lane get the downtown faster, but it's not alleviating the traffic problems right here. And so this is a, this is, it was, it was pushed forward by David Armbruce. And it is actually putting some additional concrete and looking at changing some exit ramps to potentially make it more efficient in the most congested, 23rd most congested roadway in Texas. So it doesn't really help them with their toll road to, like they're just having to spend out of pocket. But they also still have to get Techside to approve it.
But to that degree, I think it's very much a positive step for this entire, for this entire region. And again, I don't think it should be lost that they took the initiative to come to speak to Rollingwood about it. So with, assuming no objections, I'd like to reach out to CTRMA and thank them on behalf of the city for that. And I would, I would encourage us to follow up with, with Techside and let them know of our support as a community if the council is, is not approached.
And I don't have the opposition. I think, I mean, they are still missing those heat maps and everything, but at this point, it sounded like almost every question that we asked, like have you tested this? Have you tested that? They had simulated it already. The only thing they hadn't simulated was my question of actually adding a little more concrete on the southern side to, to create the exit lane earlier, to, and to create a dedicated exit lane instead of making a general purpose lane that exits off. So they're going to look at modeling that in addition. But they are trying to put some design modification there. So I'm, I'm not opposed to asking Techside to make the ramps.
Should we do a resolution to support Techside?
We could. Probably. You want to have it for the next meeting? Or you can, okay. We can work on that for the next meeting.
Amy and Wendy, I would thank you both very much for spearheading our ballot with CTRMA. Very much appreciate it. We'll have a resolution for your consideration for July. Any other discussion on seven point oh two? Any action? Great. No need for seven point oh three. As discussed, the reports under Section Eight are available to the public for their review. I think I covered everything. Missed anything? At that point, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? I don't know. Turn it on my block.